All right. Well, good morning, everybody. This is Jomo Stewart, Jim Dodson at the largest group of people we've had in our board meeting or in our boardroom forever. So, good morning. We're here at Fairbanks Economic Development Corporation. It's Tuesday morning, September 21st, 2021. Eight thirty-ish in the AM, and we are here with a great many members of the Interior delegation to do a special session three after-action report and debrief. See if we can let, see if we can wrap our arms around and our minds around what has occurred over the special session, how far we've moved down the path towards a fiscal plan, we've nailed down budget, all the moving parts. But I did want to give our Interior delegation the opportunity and the public an opportunity again to try to get some understanding about where we are, where we still have to go, and how we might get there. All right, so without further ado, I'll just go ahead and if we could just go ahead and introduce ourselves here in the room.
Representative Bart Laban, House District One.
Representative Mike Prox, House District Three.
Michaeli Anderson, Staff to Senator Myers.
Governor and Staff should represent Laban.
Steve Thompson, Representative out of District Two.
Roger Berggras of Governor.
Volunteer of the year.
Jim Dodson.
And Jim Dodson, President and CEO of the Fairbanks Economic Development Corporation. Although I'm not sure you can see it from the recording, we also have with us Senator Scott Kawasaki, Representative Greire Hopkins, as well as some, oh, and Representative Adam Wool by phone. All right, so I'll just open up the floor. Just to let everyone know, I do have the legislative website pulled up. If there are any specific bills you'd like to reference, if there's any materials that you would want me to pull from there. So you can just let me know. All right, I'll open up the floor.
Okay, I guess if you sum up the third special session in one way, it would be that it must have been a failure because the governor's called for a fourth special session to begin on October first. And if you were to look at why it was a failure, you would just need to look at the fourth special session, and that is to fund more of the PFD and to find a long-term fiscal solution for the state of Alaska's business model. And we spent a month in June trying to hammer out a PFD amount in the House passed by a narrow vote, I think it was 2119, an $1,100 PFD, and the Senate ended up concurring with the final bill that was delivered, House Bill 3003. So the PFD amount was set at $1,100, and I believe the governors accepted that amount, so checks are going out in the middle of October. But it doesn't mean that there's not another bite of the apple ahead of us, and that would be the fourth special session beginning on October 1st to, I believe the call was for funding additional PFD monies and a long-term fiscal plan. That's in a nutshell, from this guy's perspective.
That's a nice introduction. Anyone else like to jump in? Go ahead, Mike.
Well, Representative Laban pretty much captured it. The underlying problem is we've got to figure out a way to talk to each other instead of at each other. That'll take some work.
You're felt like from a delegation perspective, you've worked together fairly well. Both minority members.
We do get along.
In fact, all three of you are minority members.
No fistfights in the hall, so we're doing pretty good that way. But yeah, there's a lot of differences though about on how much for the PFD and how do we raise money? Do we address any taxes? There's a couple of bills in there out there trying to. Ivy Spahn holds this school bill. It's kind of like the old-school funding for, you know, for years up until 1980, we had a $10 a year school tax. Hers is more, if you look at it, it's graduated by how much income you have. If you make $30,000 or less, it's 25 bucks that year. And it graduates up as larger and larger until it gets to $200,000 worth of income, you'd be paying $400. So basically, based on income, it's an income tax, basically. There's no question about it. I don't know if that will fold or not. It's an income tax. The governor said, "No, no taxes," and very, he'll be alone, so I don't know if he'd let that one go through or not. And it would be, you know, on the larger side of things that it had to be held out monthly or whatever on your payroll. So it's payroll income tax, basically. There's other income tax bills out there. I think there's one for sales tax. I haven't seen that, but I heard there is. And we're trying to figure out how to get through this without spending all of our earnings reserve. You hear all these numbers. Well, the earnings reserve account has got $13 billion in it, not 22, $13 billion as of yesterday. Out of that $13 billion, there's a lot of unearned income, and that leaves $6.7 billion in available money to be spent, 6.7. You know, if we were to do the full PFD and the payback, that would be eight and a half billion dollars right there. So we've got to be careful what we're doing. If we spend all of that reserve and and the way that the federal government's going, what's the economy going to do? Are we going to continue to have big gains in the earnings out of the permanent fund? And if we don't, then we're going to have no money to run government, no money for PFD, and it's kind of scary. We've got to look at all the possibilities. So that's what's kind of bothersome. What we're trying to wade through is how do we get through this looking into the future, you know, several years down the road, and that's what's kind of scary. That's why we kind of, Mark and I both agreed on an $1,100 PFD because that still leaves us to where we might be okay going into the future. We don't want to see us overspend that earnings reserve account completely because that's, you know, used to be that 93% of the state's revenue came from oil. Now I think it's around 30 or less, less than 30%, so we have that to make up, and we've got to be able to survive through this.
This is Representative Hopkins. I'm there with what Bart and Steve have talked about. It was good to see a number of the Interior delegation there on an $1,100 dividend, so we did not have to dip into the earnings reserve just because we have $13 billion in there, or sorry, $22 billion in there with the, no, sorry, 13 is what you said. With the $6.7 billion in earned revenue and realized gains in that fund doesn't mean we should spend it, and I think that's the right move that we did was to not dip into the, not raid the permanent fund because we're going to need that tomorrow and in the future. Otherwise, we're going to have to rely on taxes to support the government where we're at. We've been trying to cut the budget and hatchet the budget for longer than I've been coming down, longer than Bart's been coming down, not everybody on this call, but I've been trying to get it down, trying to get it down. And, you know, once you start getting to the cuts that are required to pay a full dividend, you've got to see what happened in 2019 when the governor put forward that bill. So that new, and that was, you know, 1,000 people, literally 1,000 people at the last land of Pioneer Park to come out and speak against those vetoes and against those budget cuts. And because it was real, especially the economic impact it would have on Fairbanks was going to be more than profound. It was going to be devastating. And so going into the next special session, if people want a bigger dividend than $1,100 or give or take a few hundred dollars on each check, we're going to have to find new revenue. And the governor keeps talking about new revenue. He hasn't put forward anything in terms of new revenue, and we keep getting mixed messages from him about what that looks like. He says, you know, everything's on the board, and he comes forward with 10 different options at the working group that came forward that Mike and I were alternates on, and Kawasaki was a member of it for the Senate Minority. And they came forward with upwards of 10 different options: gambling, oil tax changes, something, another method of taxation that goes for online sales and online work. And that would be another type of sales tax that could bring in a fair bit. Maryland is doing something like that. There were a couple others on the table that he brought forward on a slideshow. We haven't seen any of those presentations, so it looks like it's up to us to either balance the budget with the dividend formula going forward or put forward our own new revenue, like guarantee our sales tax. Representative Wool has a good PFD bill that pays for itself and creates a balanced budget. I've got a formula I'm going to be coming forward with that utilizes, like Rip Wool's, it utilizes oil royalties and permanent fund earnings to pay a dividend and steps up so we can have a sustainable government, but it's going to require revenue to pay for it as well. And if we want to avoid, you know, raiding our retirement fund for short-term gains now to watch those checks go away, we're going to need revenue to balance that out. So that's where the hard part is. And if we want to make sure we don't raid the permanent fund in the future, we're going to have to lock up that percent of market value in the Constitution in some way so we can eliminate our legislative hands being able to get onto the earnings reserve and then raiding all of the different savings accounts we have. So this is our last opportunity, one of our last opportunities to protect that percent of market value draw and not raid the permanent fund.
If I may, sir, you mentioned full PFD. What's, can you define that?
Yeah, like someone whispered in the room, there's a statutory permanent fund, which is the 40-year-old formula that comes in around 3,800. Now the governor's pushing for a 2350, $2,350 permanent fund, which would be the 50-50 split of the percent of market value draw, which would be half of almost all of our earnings going to the dividend, of course. And then there's the $1,100 dividend that we paid for, which was something of a agreement. It was essentially a net dividend. This is how much we spend. This is how much revenue we've had. That difference is the net dividend that we paid for this year.
Okay, and so that $3,800, quote-unquote, the statutory, that would be just for this year, or does that include some level of payback for, quote-unquote, underpayments for this year?
That's using the 1982 formula of the statute.
Because it's based on what? The earnings reserve itself?
Yeah, it's based on performance. The statute is just based on what a five-year average of earnings of the fund.
With the statutory distribution.
50% of them.
Of 50%.
Well, yeah, you're taking.
So that's what they mean, or that's what folks mean when they keep talking about the statutory. Okay.
That worked great 40 years ago. And we had 93% of our income to run the state came from oil, and now we don't have that.
Okay, another phrase that was mentioned was POMV, the percent of market value.
SB 26.
SB 26. And at the time that was said, well, there was a determination of what could be, quote-unquote, the sustainable yield or sustainable draw from the earnings, the realized gains, correct? And that was said at what? It was 5.25% statute, then gradually down to 5%.
It's 5% now.
It's 5% now.
And that's, that's, if you look at it, you know, we keep talking about maybe a spending cap. Well, that is a spending cap. There's only X amount of dollars, and we got to figure out then how do we divide that by percent of the earnings? How do we divide that up? And that's what it comes down to, is that how much goes to permanent fund dividends and how much goes for necessary services to run the state of Alaska?
Well, that's not exactly right, because you got, that's a, that's an amount of revenue cap, revenue available for spending cap as opposed to a spending cap, which says regardless of how much revenue.
You won't overdo SB 26's draws, but that's a spending cap then completely. But this restricts it down to, and we don't want to break that. That's what it comes down to.
Yes. Rip Wool?
Who said that? Kawasaki said that?
No, no, this is Jomo. We just see that you're off.
Jomo, I couldn't hear you. Sorry, I'm driving. I can't hear much. Yeah, I could give you a couple words here. You know, there's a lot of discussion, you know, about PFD, obviously. That's really the big issue. And what's happened is a few things. The governor is holding hard on what he calls a 50-50, which means the 5% draw, which is, was about $3 billion, and it's ratcheted up due to the performance of the stock market of last year, so the fund is worth a lot more than it was a year ago. That 5% draw, he wants to give half of it or 2.5% out in checks. So if you look at that 5% as taking up about 70% of our budget or being the same value as 20% of our budget, we would then be giving 35% of the state budget out in individual checks. Myself and many others think that's too much and really irresponsible. If you take 30% of a gross revenue and hand it out in checks at a time when your other revenues, such as oil, have been declining for quite a while. So I think that's really irresponsible and not really a smart economic move. And I think that was the prevailing thought, hence the $1,100 is what we ended up with. And I think, I think the vote was 24 yeses in the House on HB 3003. I believe Representative Laban said 21. I think it was as high as 24, but that doesn't really matter. It passed the House and the Senate barely, barely passed it. You know, they have their own issues over there with the PFD. But the governor won't back down from 50-50. And initially, the 50-50 PFD would have created a large, and still does create a large deficit that would have to be filled. It was as high as a billion dollars or more. Now it's down to about 700 million. So it's basically double what the PFD is now. The PFD that we passed is 700 million. The doubling would be about 1.4 billion, so we'd be about 700 in the hole. And people say, "Well, we could pay it if we had 700 million of new revenue," which really, those kind of numbers, you can raise some with changing the per-barrel credit on oil taxes. You can raise motor fuel tax. You can have the head tax, the Representative Thompson mentioned earlier. There's little ways to sort of nickel and dime it, but to get 700 million, you're going to have to have a broad-based either income or sales tax. That's really the gist of it. Now, $1,100 PFD can be paid right now without any additional revenue. That's in part due to the price of oil going up over the last year or so, and the stock market really boosting the value of the permanent fund. So the 5% was 3.1, 3.2, now it's about 3.8. And that's a five-year rolling average. It's not 5% of any one year. It's 5% of the five-year rolling average. So, you know, that number's gone up. So right now, we could pay a 75-25, which is again about $1,100 or $1,200, without any new major tax. I mean, maybe a little bit of motor fuel tax. We might need a couple hundred, but based on today's oil and stock market. The stock market is not, you know, set in stone. It will go down. In fact, it's going down right, I think. I mean, no one's saying the stock market will stay high forever. Price of oil will not stay high forever. It has been low at $40. And let's not forget that at $40, these per-barrel credits and other oil taxes don't really amount to much as much as they do at $80 or $100, which is when people were saying it raises a billion, the ballot measure one-type talk, and it doesn't really raise a billion dollars at all. So, you know, it really comes almost down to a philosophical question. Do we want to give out that much money at a time when our economic situation is tenuous? And there's many people that think it's our entitlement. It's our right. It's our money. It's our mineral rights and so on and so forth. But I think the permanent fund created by Jay Hammond was for a day when oil went away, and we needed to live off something that would last infinitely, and that was our sovereign wealth fund. We're drawing 5% off it. That's a very aggressive draw off a sovereign wealth fund. But it's deemed sustainable, but if you start doing 6% and 7% and 7.5%, then you will erode the fund. Also, oil, I'm not going to say it's going to be here forever, and bringing in big, big numbers. And I do want more oil to be put into the pipeline, but historically, it's been going down for decades. And I think the future of hydrocarbons is also tenuous. I mean, we're building charging stations. Car companies are devoting themselves to electric cars. So I think we really have to think about the long term, and the long term means maybe not relying on oil. As again, as been stated, we used to have 90% of our budget with oil when we were bringing in $8 billion a year in oil revenue. Now it's like 1.2 billion, and the pipe line's at under 500,000 barrels a day. So I really think we have to look at the big picture, and the PFD statutory formula, $3,800. We haven't paid a statutory formula in five or six years because we know we can't afford it. So the governor's ratcheted down to 50-50, which is 2,300. I think that's too high, and I think we have to look at the economic stability of the state before we look at the economic stability of handing out individual checks. That's just my feeling. And I know others do agree with me, others disagree with me.
Sir, if you don't mind if I step in for just one second.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
No, you're doing great, sir. So just so I'm clear. So again, the phrase you used was a net dividend. Actually, I believe Greire used that term, net dividend. So in the very immediate term, again, we paid our bills, our corporate bills, what was left over is what is, you know, is what is being distributed without negatively impacting, again, our fiscal position relative and into the future. It didn't necessitate an overdraw, nor does it necessitate taxation.
What sometimes people call the residual dividend is when we, after we pay everything, whatever's left over is sort of the dividend, and that's kind of what we're looking at now, the 1,100. And let's not forget, we got a billion dollars in federal money, 500 million this year, 500 million next year, that we're applying to some of our government expenses, which frees up some money to allow us to have this $1,100 dividend in addition to the high oil. But I'm not, I, I mean, right now, we can pay 1,100 with no additional taxes, and that's what we settled on. Also, this governor does not want any new taxes. He's made that very clear. So it's highly unlikely. Go ahead.
Well, no, he's, he has said that he would consider some. He just hasn't made any direct proposals. He hasn't made any statutory offerings for what those taxes would look like. If I may, Senator Kawasaki is online. I would like to give him the chance to make some preliminary comments, and then we have a hand raised by Mr. Sole. And Brett Thompson.
Thanks, Jomo. Yeah, I could say in the Senate, you know, it's pretty evenly split in the Senate majority. It's a 7-7 split. There's folks that want to, or at least they vote to pay out a full statutory PFD, the 3,800. I wasn't one of those people, but I did support the 2,350. Folks know that when the vote happened, it did pass as an amendment. And then I had to reconsider or resend action in adopting that because the House basically wasn't going to come back. A lot of the House members had already left, you know, at that point in time. The $1,100 PFD stood, and, you know, I just, I couldn't come back to the district. I know most legislators couldn't go back to district without some sort of a PFD in place, and so the $1,100 was really a practicality of sorts. I can tell you, again, the Senate is pretty much evenly split on a PFD, whether it should be a PFD that's residual or whether it's a PFD that should be fixed in statute. And then there's also folks that are in the majority, very, very divided on how that looks. We're, I mean, it's basically, like I said, a 7-7 in the Senate in the majority, and then a 3-3 in the minority, so it's a 10-10 split. So to get any sort of action on a PFD moving forward, I think it's going to be really tough in a fourth special session. I did speak with the Legislative Director yesterday to tell him that, and I guess he can count noses too and recognizes that we're going to have a special session beginning. Actually, it's not going to begin on that Friday. It's going to begin on the Monday. We're going to have a technical session on the Friday prior to, which is October 1st. And then most members will come down on Monday to start voting and start pounding out some things. The Fiscal Policy Work Group was also brought up, Fiscal Policy Work Group of which Greire, Mike, myself, Ron. We did actually get every member of that group to sign on to taxes and revenue enhancements in the form of 500 to 775 million dollars. But that was contingent on some sort of a PFD or POMV formula placed into the Constitution, which is also tough to do. It included some cuts between 25 million and 200 million over five years. But, you know, the taxes that were introduced by the governor, he hasn't shown us an actual package of what it looks like, but he did say a sales tax that would bring in roughly 300 to 400 million. The oil change in oil taxes, which bring in 150 to 250 million dollars a year. You start to add those up, and they do actually add up to the right number. It's just a matter of getting the legislature to finally vote on it. And I don't know, I'm not really optimistic that it'll happen in the next special session. I think everybody's pretty worn out after three previous special sessions, and then the work group also had a month and a half of meeting every day or six days a week. Mike was online every day. And I know it's going to be a real challenge coming up in October. That's all I've got to report. If you've got any questions, let me know.
Okay, I believe we will. But Brett Prox?
Do you have Steve as a question?
I know, but Brett Prox actually hadn't had a chance to make a comment. Okay, very good.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
I just wanted to, Steve, and that will do you, Rick. I just wanted to put the numbers in perspective. You heard Adam, Representative Wool talking about how 50-50 split, we're going to be short $700 million. How do we do 700? Everybody, you've got to look at the numbers and realize what they are. The school tax, income tax, if you want to call it, that Ivy's got, is only going to bring in 60 to 65 million. Doubling the fuel tax from eight cents a gallon to 16 cents a gallon is only going to bring in 40 million. Those two together only bring in $100 million. If we change the oil tax from, or oil per-barrel credit from $8 to $6, the oil companies aren't going to like that. But that's only going to bring in a little over 100 million, maybe between 100 and 150 million. So we're not even halfway to the 700 million shortfall if we go with the 50-50 split of a 2,350 PFD. How do we get there? That's what scares us as legislators to try. How do we do something that isn't going to really gouge into people?
I suppose that is part of our concern, although Jim will correct me if I'm wrong. Or, of course, but he will. But if we said any kind of fixed number regarding the division between paying the bills and a dividend. Here at our shop, when it first came up, I guess probably about three or four years ago, we did testify in favor of essentially a net or residual dividend. That's probably the more prudent course. At least under the current circumstances. I should go on record to say that we did take the position of a, again, a net dividend as being the more prudent course. Rick, Sole.
Sure. So my question, I kind of have been looking at this in both the short term and long term, sort of a bifurcated. The discussion you all are having now is primarily focused, it seems, on the size of the dividend this year. And while that's significant and clearly has budget implications, to me, it's less important than some resolution on the larger issues. Honestly, if we could resolve this issue, I'd be saying do whatever dividend it takes, whether zero or whether 5,000, to get some kind of consensus on a path forward. So that's what I want to talk about for a minute, and just to understand, is there some consensus on some statutory language, whether that would be included in the POMV? Recall, of course, Senate Bill 26 did not have that guidance. It has the 5%, but it doesn't have the annual dividend. Where's the group at on that? And maybe Representative Prox, I'm sure you could speak for some others. Where's the governor at on that? Because that seems to drive the longer-term picture.
Well, I, this is, Representative Prox, I agree that
Well, I, this is a, I agree that. The facing the statute is probably the priority. The amount is actually secondary. The folks that I talked to out in the North Pole area are definitely upset about the cut in the amount. But the bigger issue is that the. Government or the legislature really is saying one thing and doing something else. And we're we're doing that on not only the dividend, but we've done that on the oil tax credits. We've done that on the. School bond reimbursement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that in itself understandably causes people to hesitate to go forward with that. When you, when you don't know what the, what the law is anymore and what you can depend on. So I really think that is the bigger issue is to, if if we're not going to pay these. Dividend according to the existing statute, we better change the statute. And and then we know where we're at. And the next election will decide whether we were right or not.
Um, I I I agree. Sorry, this is Brett Hopkins. Um, I agree with the fact that, you know, we do have to. Um, follow the the statutes that we have on the books. And if we wanted to pay a full statutory dividend. We would have to either break the Senate Bill twenty six, which is that percent of market draw. We'd have to either break that law. Um, and or we'd have to go through the cuts, uh, to services that would be required to fill in that seven hundred million dollar hole. Which means we'd have to break a lot of, uh, statutes on the books. Say we want to go. Take it in one fell swoop and we take it from public education. We'd have to break the public education funding law. Um, or we'd have to come up with taxes, uh, or some other way. So it is, at this point, do we allocate? Like the legislature is allowed to within the Constitution, or do we break the, um. Law for the permanent fund dividend statutory, this, uh, law that's been on the books, or do we break the? The more recent law, where the Senate Bill twenty six or the POMV. And so we have these different questions and. Um, you know, Steve was was hit on the head pretty well when he talked about that utilizing, not breaking, not raiding the permanent fund. And not overdrawing the earnings reserve is a spending cap that we have in place. And that does, uh, if we're able to harden that cap by protecting the the percent of market value, protecting the the. Permanent fund and the earnings reserve in the Constitution and the earnings reserve is not in the Constitution. Then, uh, that would limit our ability to overdraw in the future, limit our ability to raid the permanent fund in the future. And give us inherently that net dividend there. That either we have to cut the budget. Or we have to to pay a big dividend, or we have to utilize the the net dividend that you were talking about, Jomo. And that would be a way to, um, protect our our future, protect our our savings account and, um, protect, uh. Get that the the permanent fund from legislative hands. I thought Dermond had a had a question on there.
Yes, I do see that. Uh, in regards. If you were going to have a larger dividend and it would necessitate cuts, where would those cuts come from?
Sir. All over the place. The the state government isn't really in the business of governing anymore. It's in the business of providing. And. Forced providing. That's the underlying debate is people are forced to pay for one thing they might want also. Three or four things and they not want. And we have to, if if we are a business, a business always has to look at. Uh, reducing the cost of doing business and, uh, there are plenty of options whether we would get there. Of course, that's an open question. Um, there's. There's, when when we go through the the budget process, we just assume all spending is okay. And just how much more do we want to spend? But we don't really hold the administration accountable to. Standards that we have agreed on the year before and goals that we've agreed on the year before. And if a business was run like that, any business, they would soon be out of business. And we've got to come to grips with that.
Thank you. Um, good to be in the room. Uh, I I agree with some of what was just said, but government is not a business. And there's some aspects that are similar, but there's some aspects that are dissimilar. Businesses try to create a profit. Just by governments don't, they take care of the people, whether they're sick or. Uh, well, whether they have to go to school or they have to go to prison. We have to pay for all those things. So. You know, we increased our prison budget last year, um, because we're locking up more people to make the. For what some people believe makes us safer. So, uh. You know, that costs money. The prisons now cost more money than the university. We've cut the university. We're building more money and building more prisons. So that, you know, I I that's not my values, but that's what we're doing as a government. We have people that are homeless. We have people that are sick. We have people that are, uh, in trouble. We have people that are, all kinds of people we take care of, you know, we have roads. We have all sorts of things we have to deal with as a government that isn't about profit. So I don't think the analogy is always direct.
It isn't, but the the flaw is that. The disagreement on what should be the priority and and we should, in my opinion. Reduce the propensity to force people to agree with prisons or university or whatever.
That's right. In the last five years, the budget's been cut about twenty percent. We've cut about a billion operating budget, not capital. If you include capital, it goes up to thirty or forty.
Three or four billion.
Right, right. So just operating, we've cut twenty percent over the last about six years. So the cuts have been made. People have felt it. And when the governor tried to institute more cuts, uh, during the Donna Arduin regime. People came out in droves at the Alaska land event and and spoke almost unanimously against it. And I think people want services, whatever, if you, if you think that's not the role of government. That's your opinion. That's fine. But there's a lot of people that want government to do certain things and provide. And during a pandemic, they want the government to step in. During wildfires, they want the government to step in. During earthquakes, they want the government to step in. And those are services that government, uh, offers.
I I don't disagree, but then we should be upfront as people. We should say, I want you to force somebody else to pay for this or that. At least we've got an open, honest discussion.
Well, and we do benefit at this moment that on the state level, most of us, when we're talking about paying for it. We're really talking about just a reduction in the payment the state is giving us. As a fact, it's a direct taxation.
Correct.
We are forces for that.
True, true. But anyway, I think we'd get along better if we reduced our propensity to do that. I have actually put in a bill of those that want the government services. And today they're free to go ahead and send their check back if they want to do that. And then we can quit arguing about it.
Actually, now that we've, this is a long running question that I've had, and if you don't mind, Rep Rep Albon wants to go next, but I I would like to log this out there. It occurred to us, um, during the transition to the Walker administration, we had seen a report. Was one of the transition reports and one of them was regarding healthcare. Um, and it says that at the time, our our state healthcare expenses were increasing by six million dollars a month. A month. Now, whether it's six million, whether whether we read that right and it was six million dollars a month, or it was six hundred thousand dollars a month. In any case, it was rising well in excess of the rate of inflation. We all know that those kinds of expenses will gobble up your budget. You don't hire another person. Um, but your expenses are going up six million dollars a month. Um, I guess one of the questions, long run questions we've had here in this shop is, is there anyone on the state level? Really going through the administration and its cost drivers to figure out what those major cost drivers are? And working to try to reduce them. Again, that's just one example, um, is healthcare. Just like the national debt, um, interest payments on the national debt alone gobble up a huge amount of the expenditures of the federal government. And over time, they will gobble up the budget entirely. Um, if if something doesn't come along to restrain it, and that's even if you didn't borrow another dime from today on. Is there anyone on the state level really diving into that that we know of? Is there anyone in the administration? Is there anyone in the legislature? Is there anyone outside of the legislature looking for those kinds of cost drivers and how we might?
Small increments at a time, I think, have been looked at by most of us, and we're looking at things. I'm looking at a couple of them that are definitely need to be done. Because I'm fed up with some of the administration down in June. Top four floors of the state office building are huge, hundreds of flight lights on. Those lights are on twenty four eight hours a day, seven days a week, even holidays. And I'm trying to get it pinned down as to how much are they paying for electricity in that great big building down there because. There's nobody in there. I mean, their first comment that they did was, oh, the janitors are in there. I talked to somebody that worked there. They said, we got off work at four thirty. The janitors are in and out and gone by six. And then there's nobody in there. So I'm trying to figure out how many, how much money do I reduce their budget by to try to force them to turn off the lights? Because I have parked on this for several years now. So there's increments though. You know, that might be maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars or so as well. That's not enough to make up the difference.
But it adds up.
We had, we had a presentation in finance, I think, last year about the rising costs of medical in Alaska. In Alaska, rate of increase of medical is faster than the rest of the country and is faster than inflation. And this was a consultant they hired and the the graphs were scary as far as what our medical costs are going to be. And I think six million a day is not, a a month is not, um, far fetched. We have about two hundred and thirty five thousand people on Medicaid. In Alaska, almost a third of our population. And when they get older and they have comorbidities and so on and so forth, they get sicker, they require more. Uh, medical care. Our doctors are some of the most, um, highly reimbursed doctors in the country. We have the eightieth percentile rule. Um, the doctors are doing great. Obviously, now there's a lot of work, but, um, they, uh, those costs are going to bear down on our, um, health and social services. In a big way that we have to address, either reducing costs, changing the eight percentile rule, um, do some kind of, you know. Uh, fee consolidation or negotiation, but, you know, and they don't, providers don't like to hear that, that's for sure. But that, the number one driver right there, healthcare, and over the next ten and twenty years. And the budget, by the way, the budget that was presented, um, by the administration saying if we have fifty fifty. Over so many years, we won't need any more revenue. It was based on really rosy projections on oil, the stock market, and it included a flat or reduced budget. And to reduce a budget or keep it flat even with these rising healthcare costs, talk to a school district, talk to anyone that pays. Health insurance for their employees, state, et cetera. They can't keep those costs flat. They cannot. So I think healthcare is probably the number one driver.
Oh, you did want to make a comment.
Well, I was just going to piggyback on, uh, government as a business. And, uh, I do have a little bit of a background in, uh, the business sector. And I've loaned hundreds of millions and probably north of a billion dollars to Fairbanks area businesses over a forty two year banking career, all here in Fairbanks. And I can tell you that there isn't a single business that I ever loaned money to that had in its company policy. The payment of a of a dividend to the ownership group as the first order of business paid out on January second of every business year. As a mandatory action. And then hope that at the end of the year that they had surplus profits to cover that dividend. That they want to pay to the owners as the first order of business. I don't support putting any PFD formula in the state constitution. I think that's bad business. It's bad public policy. And if we really want to ball things up for the state of Alaska, we would support that. And I don't, if you don't know where I stand. Thank you.
Back you, you know.
We do have a hand up, uh, from a a uniquely positioned individual. It's a former representative, former senator, former senate president, Gene Terrio. Sir.
Thanks, Jomo, and and thanks all of you for being, uh, um, available today. Um, for Representative Prox, um, I can appreciate, um, the message that he's hearing from his constituents, having. Represented the the same group out there for a long time. One of the things that, and and I think, Mike, you and I have had conversations about this in the past is. The the sometimes the lack of understanding of the constituents of the the different powers in. In our government. And so I can appreciate people saying that they're frustrated with. Well, the legislature broke the law and didn't follow the constitutional, um, the formula. Um, but what it, what happens is it runs right into your constitutional power of appropriation. And your constitutional power of appropriation is supreme. It's one of the the basic checks, uh, between our our branches of government. And so if if we defaulted to, well, the legislature must just blindly follow, uh, any spending formula that's in the statute. Your, you would divest or be stripped of your power of appropriation to make decisions. On what money you have today, what it needs to be, you know, what are, what are the scarce, um, resources and the, how you spread those to cover. Uh, cover the the, uh, demands, all the demands. And and so that sort of misunderstanding between what is a statutory directive? Um, and what is a constitutional power? Um, I don't know that a lot of people fully understand that. And if you were to default to that, basically, you would be dictated to by a decision that was made by a legislative body. Um, forty years ago. Um, and if you say, well, well, if we don't like it, we can change it. Well, you could have a a Republican legislature, you could change it, and you'd have a Democratic governor that would veto it. And therefore, then before you could exercise your constitutional power of appropriation, you would now need a super majority. To overcome that governor's veto. And that's just not the way our system was built, was set up. But but I understand the the misunderstanding of that. And, you know, I always thought about, okay, well, um. What can I explain to my constituents and and what am I just going to have to take a hit on? Um, and so I I I I think I have a unique understanding of the the pressure. Um, that that you're feeling from different sides of the constituent group. Uh, the specific question that I have is that on the, uh. The thought of the raising revenues, I listened to a hearing on Senate Bill, um, three thousand and two. And one component of that is the motor fuel increase. And there wasn't, as they went through the bill and they were talking about different, uh. Uh, components in it, they seemed to skip right over the motor fuel one as if it was fairly. You know, acceptable. People knew what it was, how much money that it would raise. And that made sense because the Senate had previously, uh, passed Senate Bill one fifteen, which was the identical language, I believe. And so as you go back down into special session, I'm just wondering, as far as revenue raisers, is it sort of all or nothing? Or are there, is there a chance for some of these smaller things that seem to have a degree of support? And there were numerous letters of of support for Senate Bill one fifteen, uh, for the Fairbanks Chamber, uh. Municipal League, I think even the Alaska Truckers understand that it's a user pay. There's a certain amount of money that's needed by the DOT for maintenance of the roads. And so the users of the roads actually pay for that. That seems to me to be a a fairly, um, conservative principle, the users pay. So I'm just wondering, on any revenue generation, is it, is it all or nothing? Or might there be a chance for some of the things that are incremental? But seem to have some degree of acceptance and support to actually pass.
We'll open that up to the group.
Now, that's where I start down. We we have to get over this, it's all or nothing. Conversation, which seems to be the case in every conversation down in June. It isn't all or nothing. It is talking to each other, recognizing, um. What Gene said, the 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 folks out in the North Pole area are focused on the dividend. And I've been reminding them, yeah, I'm all for being. A dividend, lots of dividend, because then you get the choice. But those that want the dividend have to recognize that. Uh, they have to then state what they don't want, which is counterintuitive. We don't go to Fred Myers to tell them what we don't want, but that's what you have to do in the government. And I suppose if it comes down to it, I hope it doesn't, but. If the thousand people show up wanting spending, another thousand people that show up in the street. Uh, saying, I don't want that spending. That's an oddball way to run a society, but that's where we're headed. Um, and that's what we've got. I I would think that would be our job to kind of manage that and recognize it. We need to be open to alternatives and not just forcing people to accept those, uh, services. And at least have that conversation. Do you really want? The level of healthcare that we're providing to everybody. We're complaining about healthcare, but we drug a whole bunch more people into that system. We've made it easier for those people to depend on that rather than. We've made it easier for those people to depend on that rather than go and serve each other to have the resources then to pay for it themselves. And eventually if this keeps going, those who are forced to pay will vote their feet. We've seen that in the case of the oil industry. They, they did not invest in Alaska to the degree that they invested everywhere else when the prices were up in the hundred, hundred dollar per barrel range. They are voting with their feet, we have to recognize that. How many other projects are not going? How much money is not coming into Alaska because there's this uncertainty? If, if I invest in Alaska, is somebody going to come along five years later and take it away from me? They're deciding, I think I'll invest somewhere else. We have to recognize that you can't keep forcing people to, to support a society.
Well, it sounds like we did at least get one vote for, it doesn't have to be all or nothing.
Right.
Certainly regarding the.
And we got to get from here to there.
That's, I think the motor fuel tax, forty million, shouldn't be that hard to pass.
Yeah.
It passed the Senate, it was on our desk last year.
We passed it out.
We have, we have it in house finance and maybe there'll be some tweaks, but it hasn't been raised in fifty years. We're the lowest in the nation.
Right.
It's not a big lift to go from, you know, eight to sixteen cents.
Could we take a look at the, I thought there was refined fuels tax? Could we take a look at that, Mike? Well, my concern is that we, we use refined fuels, that's our heating source. Most of our citizens use fuel oil. And really we'd be taxing half the state's population and holding encourage harmless on a major fuel component.
Motor fuel.
This is motor fuel, this is there in that bill, it was not just a motor fuel tax or a couple other hydrocarbon based taxes.
There was marine fuel in it.
Aviation.
Yeah.
No aviation, no. Well, aviation was held harmless.
Yeah.
Right. But, I mean, yeah.
See if you can hold our fuel oil harmless.
I believe, I don't think he knew.
The refined.
And that's only forty million dollars that it's been agreeing.
Right. The refined fuel tax, my understanding of, of the tax was to, it was a very small amount, nickels and dimes, I think. To go to or support the environmental.
It's okay, that was my shameless protectionism.
Well, but there you go. Yep.
Yeah, but there you go.
Okay. Oil drops. What was it? A penny? A penny in price is thirty million dollars?
You know, I don't either.
And for every dollar, it's, it, it doesn't take much to lose thirty million in revenue with oil. So it, it's literally pennies add up to millions annually. So if you say, well, we'll raise this much money raising the motor fuel taxes, the price of oil drops a dollar.
You wipe it out.
And wipe it out. And that's the, that's the main problem with a lot of these PFD formulas that are sort of pie in the sky. Well, we can afford a fifty fifty, we're the three year bridge fund and so on and so forth. All it takes is one little piece to drop and the, the, it doesn't hold, it doesn't sustain.
I thought I heard the market went down six hundred points just yesterday, although it's round.
Yeah. If you look at, you know, we keep talking about when oil was a hundred and twenty dollar barrel. And our economy was going gangbusters up here because we had three and four billion dollar capital budgets. Our dividend was tiny, our dividend was, you know, a thousand dollars, give or take, because the market had just crashed. And I, I agree with Adam that if we're relying on oil revenue and oil royalties to be paying a large part of our state government, we're never going to be able to ever get that long term predictability and long term stability that Mike Prox was talking about, that we do need to get investment up here. And if we don't rely on the, on the oil, or sorry, if we give up so much of our permanent fund earnings and rely on, on oil instability for our future, we're never going to get that long term stable growth that we need for a, a strong economy here that you guys at Fedco are pushing for with the, the net dividend. Going back to, to Gene's question, I, I do hope that we don't have to do all at once and we can chip away at it. Because if we're able to pass a motor fuels tax, if we're able to deal with a, a small corporate tax or something that, you know, taxes Hill Corp the same as BP as for corporate taxes. If we're able to look at some other small ports, pots of revenue here and there. Give us a little bit more stability and fluctuating oil prices, maybe that allows us to look at, you know, a broad based revenue. If that's what we want to pay a bigger dividend in the future. But I'm there for the motor fuels tax, like most of the other people talking at that table, we had it in house transportation and passed it out. And they're diligently working to get it out of house finance now and, and onto the Senate, which hopefully we can do. So, um, yeah, hopefully it's not all or, or nothing and we can, we can chip away at it to start this bigger debate and, and break that logjam.
The only exception I would take with your comments, sir, is, well, it's only a slight exception. When oil was a hundred and twenty dollars a barrel, things were going gangbusters down there. Uh, which is to say it did wonderful things for the state treasury, but it did horrible things to our local economy. And for half the state's population. So we do have, that's another part of the.
And it wasn't, you know, and when, when we did give out the twelve hundred dollar dividend, the Palin put on the twelve hundred dollar bonus onto that check in two thousand and eight. You know, that, that you could look at that as needs based and that worked well. Um, but that came out of general fund dollars, that didn't come out of the permanent fund earnings reserve. So we had that money available, not in the long term impacts, but i- in the short term ability and we don't have that anymore. So, um, no, we, we did have that huge impact for, for five dollar barrel oil across the Fairbanks economy and out in rural Alaska.
Mr. Terrio, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, Joe, I, I think just on the, the issue of the heating fuel, it's my remembrance that the, because the surcharge for the spill prevention, prevention or response fund is a subsection of the motor fuel set of statutes. I think that's, I don't believe it applies to the fuel oil. Um, I know it, it also does not apply to uh, fuel that is used for the generation of power. Uh, and so I, I think that's the difference there. That surcharge is a surcharge on the motor fuel tax, I believe.
Okay, well, we are getting near the bottom of the hour. I, Jim's giving me dirty looks, I don't mind. There was one other thing I, I wanted to put on the table for a little bit of discussion. Again, we, we really were talking about, we seem to be dancing around kind of a zero budget. Year on year. We need capital dollars, there's a lot of additional needs across our state. Do we feel like those, that those discussions are getting an appropriate amount of discussion and thought? Because we do have additional, we're, we're still a very young state, we have high infrastructure needs. And I don't, are, are we, are we positioning to be able to, for the state to be able to participate more fully in developing the economy outside of simply direct paychecks to employees? Or we just fixated on cost of government in that kind of linear thought and dividends?
We're two billion dollars behind on deferred maintenance in this state and that's what's scary. And if we put a revenue or a spending cap in, we've got to make sure it doesn't include capital. Because if all of a sudden oil did go up, due to two hundred dollars a barrel or whatever, we might have some money to catch up on that. If we have a spending cap in place that doesn't allow that, it would hurt the state tremendously.
That's the other issue in the budget that the administration puts forward, besides the rosy future. Flat budget and very small capital budget, they don't put in a big capital budget. So they say we can pay it fifty fifty without any, you know, major alterations, some new revenue. But that doesn't take into account, besides the fact that it relies on rosy projections, it doesn't take into account a capital budget. So if you want to spend more than a hundred million dollars a year on, and, and as Steve said, we're two billion in need. The university is a billion, I think the rest of the state's a billion. And, um, you know, our roads and bridges and, you know, airports and always, always new maintenance are going to probably need more as time goes forward. The, I won't get into the, the climate and how it affects road surfaces, but it affects road surfaces. And anyone who's driven about these certainly knows that pretty well. And so I, I think capital budget is huge and, and we, again, that's why we shouldn't be having a budget so close to the bone. And we need some surplus and if we get surplus, we can sock it away and spend it on capital projects.
These other things to look at, the university has a land grant supposedly, the state's been slow to give them their lands so that they can do something with it, we need to fix that, that could be completely new revenue. Mental health trust, same thing, there's they're trying to do something with that. Are they doing it up frankly, I don't know yet, but that's something that we need to look into, maybe there's some different approaches could be taken with that. We've got all kinds of regulations, we debated one, unfortunately, I think politics got in the way on that. License or bills in the background checks. The state is completely doing what hospitals now as far as background checks. It's a total duplication of service we want, we're arguing, can't agree to suspend the service. We should just say, no, this is stupid. Hospitals have more interest in maintaining quality of employees than the state. They're doing it for the feds anyway, they have to, the state should just get out of that. That, that removes an impediment to them hiring employees. There's, in my opinion, there is no reason at all to have that. And yet we can't even come to some resolution on something that simple. We've got to start looking at those things and realizing that what we're, what we're doing now can't go on, we can't have everything. We tried in Hess, the administration said there was offices that were not used, there was nobody there. They just wanted to take that out of the budget. The legislature did not allow them to do that, I think it was like thirty four million bucks for seeming no justification at all. We can't keep doing it. We have to look a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit all the time and come to some sort of balance and then prove people if they if they want a service, they have to be willing to pay for it. And if, I guess if they don't want a service, we're going to have to have more political pressure to not have a service. That's what we're stuck with, it's just a political reality.
Just to clarify a fact I said earlier, every dollar in oil is a reduction of thirty million in revenue at current. And when you hit seventy dollar barrel, it's about forty million. So the motor fuel tax of forty million is offset by a drop in one dollar of the price of oil. So if we double the motor fuel tax and oil drops by a dollar, it's a wash. Jim?
I'm good. You know, I would just, just from somebody that was born here, been here a long time, you know, lived through the creation of, of the permanent fund. Lived through the creation of the permanent funded, but then that has listened to the debate that has gone on, you know, over the years about the dividend. It has consumed all of the energy, all of your time. It has, it has consumed all of the intelligence and, and it really should go away. It should just go away. It, it has done Alaska a total disservice and, and, and I can't think of any reason why somebody should believe they have an inherent right to get a perfect fund dividend, this makes zero sense to me.
If, if we go along that you don't have an inherent.
That's not F E T C's official position.
But then we have to recognize that we don't have an inherent right to anything. Then we can start having a conversation. But point well taken.
All right, well, we are at the very bottom of the hour, in fact, we've rounded it. With all these people in the room, I'd like to give you all a big round of applause, thank you very much for coming and spending time with us, no one else clapped. But thank you all, I, I, I do want to, wow, I do want to leave again, just so I'm clear. So again, it just stands now, we have a budget. So all the services, all the obligations are met, vis a vis our state government. And we stayed within, we haven't overspent, we're not, you know, it's, it's a balanced budget. Right now it is still generating an eleven hundred dollar dividend. The question is, is if we want more, what are we going to do to get more? And that's for either more services provided or a larger dividend. For the, again, the excess revenues to be able to do more of the things we feel like we know, we, that we know we need to do across this state. Well, I do want to thank, we all want to thank the members of the delegation. Thank you very much both for coming and having a discussion with us, but also for your hard work. Again, we, I know I have been watching all of this all year, so I do know that the hard work you all are putting into it and what you're enduring. It's laudable and it's much appreciated, even if we don't agree on all the little devilish details. All right, well, everybody, thank you very much for tuning in. Of course, these are tier delegation, they're very accessible, if you have any further questions for any one of them, I'm sure they'd be happy to have the call and to have the discussion can be found on the legislature's website. Or by going down to the local legislative information office, which is right down by Home Depot. Beyond that, thanks to me and everybody, I will tell you, I am working hard to try to get us a presentation regarding COVID for next week. Our local representatives of the hospital gave an, uh, it was a very good presentation, if, if not alarming, uh, there at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon last week. Uh, but I'm also trying to find some representatives from the state. I have reached out to Commissioner Crum, uh, into the office to see if we could get a Commissioner Crum or a Dr. Zink. Any assistance you and the delegation might be able to provide to help us nail down, uh, that state participation would be greatly appreciated. But that is what I'm working on, so just know if I can pull it off, that will be our topic for next week. We can do a little bit of a deep dive regarding, uh, not necessarily the, the Delta variant itself, but the impact it is having on our local and statewide healthcare systems. Which is something we, we all need to keep our eyes on. Thank you very much, you all have a great rest of your day and week and we will see you soon.